All right, and our first item of business will be to have an acting chair. So is there someone who wants to volunteer to be a chair?
I'll volunteer if you'll have me. This is Commissioner Shelburne.
Great, is there a motion to accept Andrew Shelburne as the acting chair for tonight's hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Great, okay, anyone, that's Angela Ward Hyatt, anyone to second?
Second.
All right, Dr. Cook, thank you. I will do a roll call vote here, so let me just write down who is here.
I'm sorry, I was muted, I didn't know it.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure everyone gets to vote here. Yeah, all right, so all in favor, I will do a roll call vote. Dr. Cook?
Here.
Andrew Shelburne?
Yes.
Angela Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Okay. Ernest Costin?
Present.
Okay, and Sulega Jerry?
Yes, present.
Great, thank you, okay. All right, Andrew, you are the chair for this hearing, congratulations.
Thanks for your confidence, I appreciate it.
All right, so here is the script, Andrew, if you wouldn't mind. Starting.
Uh, yes, okay, the time is now six P M., I'm calling to order the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Uh, Commission May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five Public Hearing Commissioners present are Commissioner Shelburne, myself, Commissioner Dr. Paige Cook, Commissioner Costin, Commissioner Ward Hyatt, and Commissioner Gajera. Um, today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain privileges of the open meeting law, including the March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three amendment, extending the suspension of these priva- provisions until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seventh. We are conducting this meeting online to ensure the public uh, access to the deliberations of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded, all further conversations between the commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Uh, are there any media or elected official officials present? Uh, if so, please state your name, title, and affiliation. I'm hearing none. Uh, members of the public will now have an opportunity, um, well, well, sorry, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussion, to do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform, we will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
Hey, so here is the agenda, Andrew, if you would read that into the record.
Okay, um, uh, the first agenda item is ratification of the, um, uh, do I have to read all these numbers? Are, it's, yeah?
Yeah, if you can, yeah, that's.
Okay, um, the, the four twenty-seven, uh, twenty-twenty-three, seven twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, eleven twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twelve twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, uh, January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, five twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, six twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, seven twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, nine twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, and three twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five Public Hearing Minutes. Um, and then our second item is a design review, um, of two projects, the first one, seventy-three Cedar Street, uh, which is a renovation of existing building, including altering the existing roof and adding additional stories to the existing side and rear addition additions. Um, and tw- uh, sixty-nine Center Street, uh, which is to construct a two-story addition to an existing two-story house, and then staff updates, and then we will adjourn.
So the first agenda item, we have ratification of the public hearing minutes, and, um, you know, again, these are minutes from the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three hearing, July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three hearing, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three hearing, December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three hearing, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four hearing, May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four hearing, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four hearing, July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four hearing, September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four hearing, and March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five hearing, and I did receive um, from Commissioner Shelburne, thank you, a few edits which I have made, and I'll just briefly describe those to the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four minutes, there was a typo under the twenty-seventh Kennelworth Street, um, agenda item, and it was just the word "on" was spelled incorrectly, so I have corrected that. Um, in September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, under design review, um, it had mentioned that Commissioner Shelburne had uh, rec- had recused himself from the One Elmwood Street hearing, um, and he had not, so I deleted that, and I also added, um, under the motions that were made, there was a motion made by Commissioner Shelburne to deny the application, which did not receive a second, so I, I noted that there. And then finally, on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, meeting minutes, um, I made a correction to the ratification of the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four hearing minutes, um, and just noted that, um, Commissioner Costin had made a motion to approve those, and Commissioner, uh, Ward Hyatt seconded that motion. So those were the corrections, and I did not receive any others, Andrew.
Yeah, um, I think the corrections all look good, I've, I've been through these meeting minutes a couple times, and they, they look good to me, um, but, uh, you know, I uh, want to open it up for our comment for, for the other commissioners, do do the, any of the other commissioners have any questions or concerns or about the, the meeting minutes? I'm hearing none, um, so motion to approve all the meeting minutes on the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, who was the first? I didn't hear.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And is there a second?
Sorry.
May- maybe nobody's got the sound on.
Or if there's not a second, um, Ern- uh, Andrew, would, would it make sense to go individually?
Uh, I, I'll second it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that was Commissioner Ward Hyatt, so I will do the, the roll call vote, uh, Andrew Shelburne?
Yes.
Angela Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Ernest Costin?
Yes.
Sulega Jerry?
Um, can I just abstain, I haven't had time to review?
Yep, that's fine. And Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, good, we're getting caught up on the minute, so that's, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, this is huge, yeah, um, we've been trying to get these approved for a while, we had to kick this off previous agenda because we just had too much else going on. So, uh, the public has been asking for these documents, so it'll be good to get them out. Uh, next on the agenda is seventy-three Cedar Street renovation of existing building, including altering existing roof and adding additional stories to existing side and rear additions.
All right, Kurt, I believe you're here, you should be able to unmute yourself. Sure you're still here.
Yes.
Ah, great, let me find you. All right, I will just, just start off here, just to, um, orient everyone into reading my staff comments, um, you, you probably will all remember that we had an advisory review for this project at seventy-three Cedar Street back in the March hearing, and here is the property on Cedar Street at the corner of Lambert Avenue and Cedar Street. And again, it's a second empire house, um, its mansard roof, which is its probably most prominent feature, is still intact. And it has this unique side elevation which occurred, uh, this was actually a double house, and, uh, we believe in the nineteen-sixties or early seventies, the second half of it was demolished, and this was a party wall. More existing conditions, here is a, uh, kind of the earliest idea that we have of what the building probably looked like when it was a double house here, if you can see my cursor. And we have these historic maps that show, here is the existing house, and here is the side of the house that has been demolished. And if you remember in March, this was, um, just an example of what we looked at and what the applicant was looking to do, they were looking to completely, um, remove the roof and do a gable roof. And our commissioners' comments at the time, they, um, you all really felt very strongly that the mansard roof be retained, or if it couldn't be retained, that at least be replicated in its, its current configuration. So with that, um, you know, I will say my staff comments and my recommendation, staff recommends approval with provisos, finding that the proposed removal and reconstruction of the mansard roof maintains the overall shape of the building, and the proposed new additions are approp- are sympathetic to the historic character of the property in this area of the district. Final design details, including proposed window, trim, and siding, should be remanded to staff for final approval, with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate, so that's my uh, recommendation, uh, for this project, so, so Kurt, if you would like to, um, walk us through the project, I'm, I'm happy to move forward with the slides. And if you could get your full name.
Wait, sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
If, if, if we could have your full name.
My name is Kurt Maers, uh, representing my family, the mayor's family, in regards to our project here, I just want to make something clear for what you just said, that we never wanted to demolish the roof per se, but our last meeting, our drawings incorrectly expressed our intent to, to how we actually wanted to approach the project, but now we've got them updated in here, and I believe in their current rendition is a better, um, idea of what we plan to do moving forward.
Great, so we have the, uh, the site plan here, and Kurt had mentioned, um, you know, during the advisory review, there were concerns about the large oak tree behind the house and the granite posts and, um, the retaining walls, um, and I think you, you have confirmed that those will be protected during construction.
Yes, correct, that, that is our intent, we got this, we got this site plan here that you can see on screen, the, to specifically call out the, the, the protection and retaining of those items during the entirety of our construction.
Right, so I will move, um, you know, I, you know, the, the floor plans, maybe Kurt will just go.
Yeah. General, I appreciate it, um, Joseph, the, the, the floor plans are quite general, but the elevations kind of express our intent a little bit better. Here in our updated, uh, front elevation, you can see that we plan on retaining the mansard roof. The only, um, real addition, uh, re- addition, if you will, our design change we plan on doing is that demising wall that makes the building appear to be cut in half, we plan on just extending the aesthetic of the roof on that side of the building to give it more of a uniformed appearance, um, and adding additional windows on that side as well, on the third floor. We also plan, there's a certain extension on our uh, addition on the first floor, and, and that's where the additional stories come into play, we really just plan on extending the second and third floor to encompass that, uh, that, that same footprint as the, as the ground floor, and the same on the backside of the building as well, yeah. This, this elevation kind of, you, you get an idea of, of that intent specifically. Along with the additional windows that we plan on, on adding, just to, you know, give the building more uniform, uh, appearance, and taking advantage of the various sunlight and exterior aspects that we can appreciate from the interior space. Pretty much the same on this side as well, but this side highlights the, the, this, how we want to address the roof, and this is the major update that we plan on, on, on having in our design. Uh, we plan on retaining the entirety of the original roof structure, we simply plan on, uh, adjusting the aesthetic on the exterior fascia to mi- mi- the, uh, the roof itself.
Hmm. I, I have a quick question, Kurt.
Sure.
Yeah, um, facing the building from Center Street, Cedar Street, uh, is that a, an entrance that I'm looking at facing the school?
No, that's cool, that, the, the school is to the, in this particular view, left of the, of, right of the building, so the school, the, the side that we want to add, uh, the roof, uh, aspect to is what's facing the school, this side here is what's facing the school.
Yeah, Ernest, if you can see the screen, this is the side facing Lambert Ave in the school.
Okay. Got it, so that's not an entrance way there, though?
No, that, that's the, that's the basement.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Kurt, I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, uh, and I, just, first I want to commend you, this, um, is a huge improvement, um, I think, over, um, um, the, the drawings that were shown at the, the first, um, hearing, and, um, so I'm really, the, the roof line looks great, um, the, the massing looks good, um, I like, eh, on this page that we're seeing right now, I, I like the amount of windows that you've put in this elevation, um, really nice to see some more windows there, um, just wondering, I mean, like, if you could incorporate any windows on the left half, that would be fantastic, because it looks a little blank, um, but I realize there's none there now, so.
We want to, but those are the stairs to access the second floor, but this is the stairway.
Okay, you, you know, you could put up a, a window at the mid, at, you know, at a in-between area, that, that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm running from that.
Yeah, that's done very frequently, that might, that might just help it a little bit, it would be nice in the stair to have a window.
I agree, I agree.
So that's great, the only thing I'm, I'm just seeing that's a little curious is that the, look at the height of the window, of the existing window in this elevation, and how it's kind of close to the horizontal line that makes the bottom eve of the roof, and look at the windows, the head of the windows or the top of the windows, the proposed, and how much further down they are, is that a mistake? Because I saw it kind of jumping around as we go through around the building.
It would appear so, but the, uh, the existing window on the first floor in that area is a, is a high window, is a high half window, so it's not, it's, so it's not.
No, I mean on the second floor, on the second floor. Look at the, the, look at the amount of wall space between the top of that window and the horizontal eve versus the, which looks to be, I'll call it a foot, versus on the proposed, it looks like there's five, five feet or four feet between the head of the window and that same eve, and you can see that as you, as you go around through the elevations, it's sometimes low, I think it's too low, and sometimes like this one in the proposed, that looks right, those, those second floor windows look in the right place, in the right height on the wall.
It, it could be a, some kind of drafting mistake, to be honest.
I, I think it's, I think that's what it is, yeah.
That, that, that's because I can't even explain that, but I know that there is an indifference with that, where that first window is on the, on the previous side.
Okay.
But, but I, but we don't plan on doing any funky jobs like that.
Okay, yeah, it made me think, oh, are you reframing the floors to have a different floor-to-floor height or something like that?
Don't go with typical code standard with.
Gotcha. Okay, because like, just, eh, if you could, Joe, just flip through the other elevations, and just, so like, that one looks too low on the second floor, um, and those look right.
And I, I can agree with that, especially when looking at it from elevation to elevation, but.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I just, um, so I think that was the only thing that was really standing out at me as something that looked wrong.
There's minor specificities, if you will, that you might capture, that you might catch on these drawings that could simply be, uh, lost in haste as we were trying to make these drawings, uh, get to this meeting, and something that could have been simply lost in translation when dealing with the architect, but the architect has proven himself to be someone who's hard to get a hold of at times and such, so we have been in much closer communication with our contractor, and he, and I'm sure that he will be able to address any concerns like that.
Okay.
But this, as we go through the course of this project.
All right, well, thank you.
Disclaimer, if you will.
Thanks.
Yep, appreciate it.
Kurt, um, you, you, you said you have an architect, um, working on the project, I, I noticed that the drawings are, are stamped by what, what I believe is his structural engineer.
He is an architect and structural engineer.
Oh, eh, oh, okay, oh, wow.
Yeah, so he's a busy guy, apparently, but, um, he has both licenses, yep.
That's amazing, um, yeah, there appears to be some, some drafting errors too, like if you, if, Joe, if you want to go to the front elevation, it, it, you know, the, the new proposed elevation is, is quite lower than the existing building. It almost looks like the roof has dropped down, you know, maybe a foot or something, or two feet.
Again, that is odd, and I, looking at that, odd, I don't know how he got to that, excuse me, sorry, conclusion, but I think that is simply, we plan on using and retaining all existing structures, so we'll be working with what's.
Okay, okay, that's good, good, good to know, uh, maybe, maybe, um, you know, it, we may not need to see them, but, you know, for, for Joe's purposes, maybe you can send him a final, um, you know, tight set of drawings, you know, um, at, at the end of this.
Of course.
Yeah, there's one other elevation too that I found kind of curious, it's, it's the, um, sorry, it's, uh, opposite of Lambert Ave on that side, you know, if you kind of zoom in on the proposed, uh, windows in the, in the uh, kind of upper right-hand corner, I noticed that, you know, sort of the trim is a little bit different on the one.
See the, like, the first two, there.
Yeah, so some of the windows are the same, and some of them are different, it would just be good to kind of tighten that up and make them all the same.
That appears to be drafting effort, I mean, a drafting error, sorry, where he didn't adjust that window still on that one window.
Okay.
Coming through the roof, but like I said before, we plan on matching. It, it. But the intent of this project is, is an attempt at complete uniformity, um, and that's why we're trying to add the roofing on one side, and we're trying to make sure that all the windows are the same across the board, because currently they're, they're not, like in that previous, it's a example on the, of the existing one on the other side that I was alluding to. Like, it looks like this project has, this, our, our, our building has had like, you know, hack job after hack job, and people have done their own thing, and that's what we're trying to, uh, you know, have, have them all speak the same, if you will.
Roger that, okay, thank you, Kurt, appreciate, appreciate that explanation, that, that gives us all a lot of peace of mind, um. Um, are there, are there other comments that commissioners have? Commissioner Costin, Commissioner, uh, Dr. Paige Cook?
No. No, I don't have another one.
Okay, okay. Um, trying to think. Uh, yeah, I guess we could, we could go to public comment now, if there, I don't want to rush this, you know, um, if, uh, there are other comments. Have you, have, uh, Kurt, have you, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't forget your last name, but, um, have you thought any more about, um, you know, maybe upgrading the landscape a little bit, or doing any work, you know? We're not, we're not expecting you to hire a landscape architect here, but i- is there any improvements that you could make to the, to the, to the landscape, you're, you're going to have contractors, you know, sort of ruining your yard?
Yeah, we, we definitely plan on, you know, having them tighten it up and making it look good, we don't have any immediate or major landscaping intent, but we plan on making it look good when it's done, um, and we plan on doing it, it's a separate effort after we get the house, get the, the house project done, we're trying to do this, then deal with that more or less after, but we, we know, you know, the importance of preserving not only the retaining walls, not only the tree, but there's adjacent buildings and lots uh, nearby that we don't want to get in the way, I'm about to mention the school. Um, and there's another park even just down Lambert Street, so there's public, people all over the place moving and grooving, so we're not trying to get too invasive or too crazy with what we got going on here.
Understood, understood, yeah, it, yeah, your, your retaining wall is a beautiful wall, and it could, it could use some tightening up, you know, maybe some re- repointing, but I guess, you know, you could, you could look that, look at that in the future, um.
That's our intent, we definitely understand, um, that we want to preserve all that good stuff, and we want, and we definitely will tackle that, but the house take priority.
Understood, understood, okay. Hey, uh, if, if other commissioners don't have comments, let's, let's go to public comment, or do, sorry, Kurt, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, not immediately, to be honest, I think we, uh, we touched on almost everything that I was, um, had any, um, concerns with, so, um, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you guys are on board, to be honest, and I appreciate your time, so, yeah.
Awesome, great, okay, public comment, members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions, to do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff uh, via email at island, islandacdc@boston.gov.
Right, any public comment, please raise your hand, I'm not seeing any emails come in, and I haven't received anything for this application, so I think, Andrew, I think, I think we're good, I don't think there's.
We're ready to make a motion, okay? Um, I would like to put forward a motion to approve with the following provisos. Uh, proviso number one, that the final design, including any uh, proposed windows, trim, and siding are remanded to staff for final approval with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate, appropriate, sorry. Uh, proviso number two, that the proponent develops a basic landscape plan, including plantings, um, that will be reviewed and approved by staff. Um, and that number three, staff review the progress of the work during construction in order to ensure construction work follows approved drawings.
Yeah, I would just add, uh, paying attention to the window, um, window design. Because that's the only real.
That's in the first motion, or the first proviso, uh, I think we captured that.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't hear that mentioned in the win- about the windows at all.
I can reread the first proviso if you want.
Please.
Um, the first proviso was that the final design, uh, details, including proposed windows, trim, and siding are remanded to staff for final approval, with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate.
Perfect, thank you.
So I'm looking for a first and a second.
I'll make a motion that, um, that it, as, as you read it, be accepted.
And I'll second that.
Great, right, I will do the roll call vote. The, so we have, uh, Andrew Shelburne?
Yes.
Angela Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Ernest Costin?
Yes.
Uh, Sulega Jerry?
Yes.
And. Angela Page Cook.
Yes.
Great, all right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, congratulations, Kurt. You're on your way.
Much appreciated. Thank you guys for your time. This is very exciting news. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, and I'm going to note that. Commissioner Darius Milner has just joined, so I'm going to make her a co-host. Welcome, Selena.
Thank you.
And we'll go to our second. Agenda item. Which is sixty nine Center Street, construction of a two-story addition to existing two-story house, and I believe Michael is here. Michael, you should be a co-host.
Yes, good evening.
Good, okay, I'm just going to just orient everyone here to the. Property, so you can see the property sixty nine Center Street here. Here is Center Street and here is Columbus Ave. So it um, faces Center Street. This is a Google Street view, so we have the house here at sixty nine Center Street, and this is the driveway, so it has a pretty good. Um, frontage on Center Street. All right, and here are some photos that I took a few weeks ago when it wasn't raining, so um, you can see what the. Property looks like from Center Street along the sidewalk. And here is the other boundary and the driveway. Um, the current plan is for the existing garage structure to remain. The proposed addition is going to be going in this area here. And here's a little um, more detail of of the existing house. Uh, this is a later extension. This here, if you can see my cursor, this may be an earlier vestibule enclosure. It's hard for me to tell, but I know it has been in all been altered. Uh, considerably, so I will just say the applicant presented to the commission at the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Hearing for an advisory review for this project. At that time, commissioners generally supported the proposal and suggested trying to make the proposed addition less visible from the street. And encouraged the applicant to have the new addition versus the original structure read separately. And uh, get to my staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval with provisos. Finding that the areas of the building proposed for demolition, cuz there is a little demolition happening here. Are either later additions or significantly altered early features. And the removal will not have a negative impact on the historic character of this building or the district. The proposed new addition is appropriately set back from the street and reads as a distinct new addition as recommended by the commission at last year's advisory review. Final design documents at seventy five percent completion or higher are remanded to staff. For final approval with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate. So those are are my recommendations to approve with those provisos. Um, so Michael, um, if you could introduce yourself, I'm happy to let you share your screen if you want to show your own presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Chavez. Um, the architect working with the. Owners Jonathan and Bruce uh, on this uh, on this house. I live in Grove Hall, uh, have run my own small firm called Social Impact Collective. Uh, we've been around about four years now. Uh, prior to that, I was actually working at Youth Build Boston down the street from here. I worked there for ten years. Uh, and so know the community well and did a lot of uh, projects in the area uh, through Youth Build. Uh, so the so that's, you know, me, um, Bruce and Jonathan are the owners. They're actually out of town right now. They're on the call, but they're uh. Uh, service has been a little spotty, so if they if you have any questions directly for them, they may or may not be able to answer them. I can answer for them if they if they can't. Uh, but they've been uh, you know, in the neighborhood for a very long time, uh, forty years and had this house for several decades as well, lived here for a long time. Uh, and overall context for the for their addition here that. Uh, you know, Bruce likes to say he's he'll be carried out of the house, uh, you know, uh, so he wants to live here and kind of have an aging in place. Uh, situation here, and so the addition for the house is a combination of uh, you know, it's some additional space for just general living. Uh, but at the same time, it's an opportunity for uh, a living family or or an individual to, as he gets older. Live in the house with him and kind of be a caretaker essentially, but also have some of their own space as he gets older. So the entire uh, design essentially has been around. Uh, the kind of universal design idea and stages of life essentially is what this is about, both from the landscape. And from the actual uh, program of the building itself. And so I know we're talking mostly about the exterior and this group focuses on the exterior, but. I wanted to provide some context about why we're putting the addition onto the house. It stays a single family home. Uh, and you know, so the it's really just more about um, kind of comfort, some additional living space, more deck space outside and really redoing the landscape. Um, he's a big fan of plants and so uh, in kind of just general good landscaping, and so we have some strategies there as well. Um, so you want me to share my screen or or you want to.
That way you can point things out.
Okay, perfect. Um, it says sharing is not turned on. Um.
Should be now.
Send a request.
There you go.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I will. Show just real quick this the existing conditions, pictures that were submitted, um, just to get an idea of the house again and kind of landscape here. Um. But just a couple of quick photos for some additional context from what Mr. Cornish was showing. Uh, so this is the back uh, of the house here. Um, you know, you can tell that there's some significant kind of landscape grading happening from the street from Center Street itself towards the back, towards Roxbury College. Uh, kind of dips off towards the back there, and so there's some uh, you know. Grading that happens on the site, it's not just a regular flat site, but it does have a lot of uh, growth, right? A lot of the uh, older trees on site. Different plants that have been there for a while, and so that's something we want to keep and and also he's got his deck here in the back, which is a big part of what he enjoys being outside, and so we want to uh, continue to have that. Um, a couple of other shots from the side of the house. Again, you can see the original house here. Uh, we think that sometime around the nineteen fifties, this addition was put on uh, to the side of the house here with this mudroom, uh, kind of enclosed mudroom. These storm windows and stuff are different than the original windows back here, different sizes, the trim is not the same. Uh, there's, you know, not any molding and things here. That's the same as the back, so there was some and the siding itself is also different. Um, you know, it's got a different uh, era of of siding. Um, to this to this exterior here. Um, and I'll show in the presentation what section here that we're planning on uh, removing and then uh, adding our new addition to. Um, so this is the current entrance, which is on the side of the house, uh, you know, kind of off the driveway. Uh, into the main space there, and then there's also the entrance uh, to the back uh, back here from the from the rear of the house. Um. And then some other shots similar to what Mr. Cornish was showing. Here's the front, again, a lot of trees and vegetation and landscaping here. Uh, the driveway is off to my left, and then there's a walkway that we can get into the main um, room here. Um, again, this is the original. And Neo class, you know, classical home that was here, and then this addition was bumped out at some point. Um, we can tell also when we're in the basement with the foundation that the foundation stops here, kind of right under this wall, and this is a new port and place foundation on the outside. Um, so this section here is that additional part that was added on later. Um. And then again, that's that street view with the house, and so we what we wanted to do, the overall concept here from a. Architectural perspective is really keep this as the main feature of the house in terms of your view from the street. Uh, we're going to keep a lot of this vegetation. Again, I'll show you this next presentation on this other side. Um, but clean it up and really make it a more uh, clean presence on the street than it is now. So if I jump over to the presentation, then um. Uh, again, the owners Jonathan and Bruce, I'm Michael Chavez, Carson LaMaire is on my team, working with me. Again, overall project goals here was aging in place, um, and all kind of long-term intergenerational living, um, historic restoration. Uh, again, we want to have a thoughtful regenerative landscape design for the project and thinking about climate resiliency overall with these older these older buildings. Um, like we had mentioned before, in June, we had come for an advisory review, uh, like Mr. Cornish had mentioned and had some feedback there. Uh, in January, we had a butter's meeting. Now, we were initially told we needed to go through the zoning process for this project. Uh, because we received a letter that said we were in a design overlay district, um, but there were no zoning. Variances that were part of the project, but because of that, they they mistakenly told us that. So we did have an a butter's meeting in January. We also held a. Uh, a presentation for the uh, high the Highland Park uh, Development Committee, and we also got some good feedback there. After that hearing, we realized, uh, we got information from the city saying, actually, we sent you the wrong path. You really just had to go through. You all, you know, the this group right here, uh, that was the purpose of the design overlay district. We needed the B PDA design review and you guys take the that place of them. When there's this type of overlap, and so uh, so any case, now we're here for this presentation and we do not have to go to the Z P A because there's nothing that they would actually have to approve. Variance wise for this project, so we will be going through you, working with you, and then our final, you know, design will be then submitted for permit. Um, so just wanted to kind of clarify, there was some. We kind of, we probably could have been back a lot sooner. Let's put it that way. We were presenting advisory to you back in June of last year. Now here we are in May of the following year. Uh, having done a bunch of work that we uh, didn't have to, but the good news here is that we did meet with the butters. We did talk to a lot of folks, got a lot of good feedback. And that's our silver lining is that we were really able to engage a lot more with that process. So here we are with this group and then uh, you know, hopefully we can uh, move forward with drawings and we aim to break ground sometime this year, uh, depending on again, timing of the city with ISD and how they're moving. Um. So just in general context here, uh, on Center Street, you know, we have a number of different building types and styles all up and down Center Street. It's actually a really nice collection of different. Um, styles of buildings, different sizes, a lot of three-story buildings, uh, even some four-story buildings right next to us uh, that are here on Center Street, so our. Our our project is actually probably one of the smaller single-family homes that are on this on the street here in terms of its scale and size and, you know, there's a lot of multifamilies here. Um, ours is the only single family. That's on this uh, section of street here. Um. And again, some existing context, uh, this is our site survey that was completed, uh, center seats up here in the front. We have this existing building here on the front corner. Uh, and then we have the landscape all the way toward the back here. You have the three-car garage in the rear with the driveway. Um. Uh, so yeah, this is a uh, it's a neo-colonial style home, you know, the pictures on the right with kind of the original colonial styles, right? Super simple. Uh, symmetric, uh, they had doors in the essentially in the kind of middle of the long facade of the buildings. Um, gabled roofs with the with the with the uh, you know, chimney in the middle. Uh, ours was done similarly, but the neo component of that, uh, you know, since it was done later, they tended to add some decoration to it, so they would pull from other styles. To kind of dress up the old kind of more simple colonial style. Uh, and so our our particular building has some Georgian. Style references to it. There's some Italian net components uh, to it when it comes to some of the trim, the the molding. Uh, the uh, especially like the dental molding and the kind of staggered brick detail that's on the side that's not real brick, you know, it's kind of that wood um, trim work on the corners. Um, and so, you know, the the building has this kind of uh. It, you know, it's it's already old, it's built in eighteen eighty, but it has these other elements that were added to it to kind of dress it up a little bit as it was new back at that time. Um, and so some of the things that whoops, went wrong direction, that uh, we want to keep and kind of respect is though is that older. Uh, the kind of original part of of the of the home. So Mr. Cornish mentioned that we are having some uh, partial demolition, and so the original. Home is this section here, uh, is the original, you know, square kind of colonial shape. At some point, again, we believe in about the mid-century, this this section was added on. Uh, here to add a little bit more space to the foyer and this kitchen area, and then there was this like enclosed mudroom. Space that I don't know if that was a porch at one point and they closed it later or anything, but these were, you know, not original to the to the house of the neo-colonial style. So that's the section that we will be removing and then putting our addition on to the side of this part here and then on to the back. And then maintaining all of this front part that really you see the most from Center Street. Um, so this section here that you see in orange uh, highlighted here is the part that we are removing um, from the existing house. And again, I don't have all the plans in here, but the idea here is that the addition is going to be kind of off to the back corner. Uh, from a plan perspective, uh, we are doing a number of setbacks, both in plan and in elevation to kind of, you know, have it. Work its way back from Center Street itself, so it's not just one large, it doesn't look like one large addition being put onto the house with a kind of series of smaller. Uh, components to it to help uh, break up those facades and and the height um, aspect of it. But at the same time, it was mentioned about a year ago that we should, you know, have it look like it's a bit of an addition. We're not trying to make it look neo-colonial. And so we have some elevations to show some of the moves of how we're trying to do that. Um, and so if you look at the roof here, this is the existing roof, uh, that's there now, the existing shape, and then we have these additions that are being put off to the side here. Uh, there's also going to be, you know, a nice big deck on the back um, for access on the second floor as well as on the first floor. Um. And so we have, uh, start with the landscape and kind of the site and how the building is sitting on the site. Um, and so the original house is this longer section here on the front. Of the building or of the of the lot, and then our additions essentially have kind of series again of setbacks happening off to the to the back. So if you're on Center Street. Uh, you know, they kind of are hidden back here behind the existing vegetation that's there, and it kind of works its way away from Center Street and kind of away from the driveways and work your way down as well. Um. Uh, and then I'll just kind of pause here for a second too. We also have a pathway again from a purpose of uh, you know, uh, intergenerational living and universal design. We are essentially going to be regrading much of the site to be able to, if you wanted to get from essentially Center Street on the sidewalk to the front. All the way to the to the three-car garage in the back without having to go up and down any steps. Um, we're designing a path that allows you to do that while also maintaining some of the existing trees that are on the site, so this tree here will be kind of worked around, you know, both from the deck and the pathway. Uh, some existing trees that are back here now, that big tree that you see up in the front will be will remain. Uh, and then we're going to be adding some additional rain gardens and other types of plantings along the front of the building here. So from an elevations perspective, uh, one of the big things that we're kind of starting with is that we have our addition is going to not be any higher than the existing. Ridge of the roof now, so this is the original house here on the side, and then we have the additions that are being added on on this side. Um. My youngest is about ready to go to bed. Uh, so we have this addition here on this section, and then we have a setback here again. You can kind of see if you work your way back, but that's going to look like. As a kind of general note too, we are replacing all the, we want us to replace all of the siding and the roofing finish material on the outside of the house, just in really, you know, old shape, and we just want to. Put some new stuff out on there that'll last a lot longer, some more of like cement board, like cementitious siding that replicates the old style, but doesn't have the wood that's kind of been rotting away over time now. Um, and so that's, so it's going to have the same look. We're maintaining the existing trend that's going to be around the windows there now. All the molding is going to remain. Uh, but we're going to replace the actual siding component to that. Um, and so something that we're going to be doing then is trying to tie in the 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 new to the old when it comes to the actual siding will be the same. Across it, but we are going to mix it up a little bit to have that addition look a little different. Um. It's a little more visible from three D once we get, you know, to that point here. This is the side view. So by the way, yeah, so this is off to Center Street. This is the side view if you're in the driveway looking at it from the side. Uh, this is the existing house over here on the right. Um, and this section, the existing bay, that's right near sidewalk on Center Street. Uh, and then this is the addition being added on here to the side. Um, we are going to, you know, be maintaining this door. We're kind of just. Moving it out further essentially from where it is now, but you know, we have it essentially trying to be as centered as possible as originally was to the home. Uh, in the center there to kind of maintain that aspect of the of the original design and historic nature of this. Uh, and trying to maintain some of the trim details around the windows and things on this first floor as it was. On this portion of the house here, so there's some kind of like a progression of something that has some relationships to the existing building. Towards the front of the house, and then you as you work your way back, it gets a little bit more modern and a little bit, you know, kind of it differentiates it, it differentiates itself from the from the original house. Um, with the deck on the back there. Um. The rear of the house is here, so again, this is the original. We're staying back a little bit further, maintaining its shape in the ridge. Uh, and then this is the addition off to the back here again, with just a a lot of, you know, nice deck in the back and space to enjoy the the trees and the shade and the sun. Um. And then this is the side that you can't really see. There's a larger four-story building next to us, um, and so this is the side that's against that four-story building that you can't really see from from that side. Uh, but this is the addition on the back here, so it kind of extends itself out towards the rear, and then this is the original house here in the front. You know, four fifths or whatever this is of the of the elevation. Um, and again, I mentioned some landscape goals here, uh, but yeah, we're keeping as many existing trees as possible in place and protecting them during construction, and that'll be a tricky part that we'll have to work through with our contractor. Um, we all know how it means to have machines and things out there, so we'll have a plan for that. Um, you know, incorporating rain and pollinator gardens in multiple locations throughout the yard is a key for us. Um, having pathways and home entries using universal design standards uh, throughout the site and then uh, improving that the kind of street presence and comfort while maintaining privacy at the same time. Um. So one of the things we did last year was they wanted, uh, you folks wanted to see what would the house look like without vegetation, so we can get a better idea of what the addition is, and then what would it be like if you had the vegetation on site? So, um, so that's what we did with some of these first uh, three D views is, is, you know, if we strip the entire side of all the trees and everything on it. What would the addition and how does it relate to the existing house look? Um, so this is the existing house here and then this is our collection of additions kind of onto the back of the house as it kind of works its way to the rear. Uh, and some of these things have adjusted themselves a little bit since that time. I think we actually have a slightly different, you know, entry oning covering over the door now. I think maybe it's going to be a little bit more of a straight kind of style here. Um, but overall you get the idea of the existing house. We're trying to maintain similar sized windows on the facade that faces Center Street. Um, from the height perspective, you know, sales and, and, and headers. Um, same thing here, we're trying to maintain some of these um, simple details that are on the, on the Center Street side. And then as you work your way back, it gets a little more simpler and modern while maintaining some similar ratios on the first floor. And then the back gets a little bit higher and kind of modern um, to, for lighting, uh, for natural lighting and, and kind of visible purposes. So if we added in, in some of the vegetation, again, this big tree that you see here is going to be cleaned up. So the idea here is that we want to have the main facade that you see now on Center Street still be the. Main thing that you see as you're walking down or driving down the street. Uh, but what we want to do is clean up a lot of the, the plants and stuff that are growing here. Putting a little bit more of a traditional style fence on the front. Uh, I have a, a more formal entry to the house uh, off of Center Street. Currently you would get to the front door by going through down the driveway. So we want to have a path that's from the sidewalk itself and have a little more of a kind of pedestrian entry um, to the, to the site. And then have all the trees and things have a little bit, a canopy that starts a little bit higher up. So you can actually see towards the back of the site a little bit better. Um, so it has a little bit that natural kind of um, you know, viewing, but still maintains the tree canopies and stuff there that are there now on site. Um, so if I go down a little bit further again, we would have the, the trees, you know, kind of be where they are. It'd still be, you know, there, been there for decades. Um, but again, just clean up that undergrowth and have it be a little bit more of a, you know, clean path towards the front door. Uh, formal entries. And again, these trees also then play a role in helping kind of. Pro- provide some uh, views of the addition. You know, you get those peaks as you're working your way around the site and kind of down the sidewalk, but you're not going to get the whole thing all at once in any point. While you're walking down the street. Um, and so we, that's, and that's the kind of trees again, that are just essentially on the site now. And we're going to be adding these types of rain gardens and some, you know, uh, pollinator gardens and things like that around different portions of the house. And then again, as you kind of work your way down the driveway, this will be again, just a lot of, you know, trees that are already on site will be left there. From a palette perspective, from a, you know, exterior materials color perspective. Uh, you know, we, uh, right now it has this kind of yellow, uh, I'm just going to maybe go to this one and zoom in a little bit. Um, it has this kind of off white or yellow colored. Uh, you know, siding on the side here and it's kind of rusty red. Um, trim on the side here. Um, we're not sure that these are original colors. We've, we haven't been able to find any really old photos of this uh, in terms of like, you know, its original design or how it was initially um, done. Um, but you know, part of it's about the uh, you know, personal taste and kind of wanting to update, make kind of refresh this facade a little bit, make it feel a little more classy, I think in certain ways. Um, uh, we know, uh, more kind of chocolate palette. Um, you see a lot of, you know, again, there's a lot of very older colonial homes that were this, this color a long time ago. And so we're kind of thinking about that, but also using the opportunity to have that color tie into the new one uh, to the new addition and have something that we can. Pull together between the both old and the new, so that really the addition is more focused on window styles and sizes more so than the actual color palette. And trying to, you know, mess with those two different things. And so what we've been doing is having a kind of lighter, uh, kind of dark, it's got dark gray or lighter light, kind of black color on the siding here. Uh, the trim around the windows will be white and then a darker chocolate color uh, around all of the kind of uh, you know, corbels and things like that, that we see the decorative elements um, around the other parts of the house. Um, and so the addition will have that same palette. Uh, but you can see here that, you know, we have some then vertical siding on the upper floor of this section of the, the addition to make it look a little different still. Kind of say, yes, this is an addition. It's not original. Um, but at the same time, it still has a, a color that relates back to the original house over here on the right. So that it all kind of feels like it's, it's continuous and it's, it's a little bit more of a, a single element. Um, and then we'll get, we'll have some similar trim. So although the original house will have its original trim. The most more detailed trim painted that dark color. This will have a softer, kind of flatter trim around this uh, addition on the side here. So how are we trying to ensure that we're maintaining uh, you know, the Highland Park standards and criteria that's been put into the. Uh, the document, right? The two hundred page document. Um, and so some of the things that we obviously paying attention to is the, you know, be trying to be compatible with district goals to preserve and enhance character defining aspects. So we are not taking away any of the trend. We're not removing any of those original details. Uh, but what we are doing is, is changing some of the, again, some of the colors to try and tie it into the addition and make it clean across the whole thing. But not removing anything that's original to the house. Um, again, we, it's a diversity of building massing and height across the neighborhood. And we also think that the addition is in certain ways respective of that. I mean, we're not going above the existing height of the building. So respecting the original, but at the same time, it does have a slightly different massing, uh, just, you know, to the, to the building that it does now. Respecting setbacks and space between buildings and the street that preserves and enhances really existing relationships. So again, we're really having the, the main existing house that you see now that's on Center Street be the focus. And making sure that that's really what you see from the street uh, the majority of the time. And then having setbacks on the addition itself to respect that street and the relationship between, you know, pedestrians and, and the building. Uh, that the height shall respect certain standards of scale. Again, we're not going above the height of the building. We're still the smallest building on the, on the street. If you walk down there, everything's still three and four stories. And we're still maintaining that two story height uh, of the original of scale. And then again, diversity of occupancy, um, you know, we don't have multiple units here. We're keeping single unit. But offering opportunities for people to have intergenerational living opportunities um, after Bruce is out of the house. Um, or other folks, the family could live there and have opportunities for different things in that site as well. So that's uh, the presentation and the, our approach to the project and, and our goals for the addition and happy to have a conversation.
Thank you. Uh, com- commissioners, um, uh, do you have questions or comments for uh, Mr. Chavez?
Yeah, I do. Well, first I want to say, uh, that was really good presentation. Uh, really like it. I'm familiar with the site. And it is raising a lot of questions, questions that are not concerns. They're just questions because I'm not an architect and uh, and I love that house. I love that spot. It's a nice location. Um, so how many trees do you think uh, come out of there? That's one of the questions. And uh, and also just take two, the top two things here. Uh, define into, uh, what do you call it? Intergenerational? Yeah. How, how do you define intergenerational living? I mean, when I think of intergenerational living, I'm thinking about where there's uh, you know, elderly. And you know, parents and grandparents and everybody sort of under one roof from babies, you know, to senior citizens. But is, that would mean to me, but I don't understand what you mean by intergenerational. So please explain.
Sure. So I'll start with the trees question. Uh, we have, and Bruce is very, I mean, he knows this, all, every single tree on the back of his hand on his site here. Uh, there's a couple, you know, wh- he's calling kind of weed trees, the trees that kind of just grew over years that aren't necessarily local to, to uh, the area. That uh, those are the ones that we're focusing on, on uh, potentially removing. I think there's going to be. Uh, two or three of those trees that are going to be taken out. Uh, in this area right here, there's this one, um, and I think one's going to be moved. Uh, but this particular zone here where we're going to putting on the addition really doesn't have a lot of big trees on it. Uh, so the nice thing is that this tree that's back here is what we're keeping this one. We're keeping the trees that are in the back now back here. And the big one that's up at the front here that you see in all the photos, we're keeping this one. Uh, so this, and this is that tree that you see the kind of the three trunk sticking out here. We're keeping that. Uh, and then the one up in the front, uh, there's this kind of tree off to the side here that this one uh, that's going to be taken out. Uh, that, that will be removed. And then that's really only, the only big one that's being taken up for the addition here. Um, everything else will be, but we kept as is. We're to, they really, our big challenge, I think, is going to be maintaining the, you know, the root structures of the existing trees and not, you know, killing trees as construction happens. So it's going to be a lot.
Right. I guess my, my question is, um, I, I, I love what I'm, what I'm hearing. Uh, but I lost track about how many trees are actually coming out?
There's going to be one main, one big tree, this one right here. This, this, there's going to be one tree that's significant that's coming out. There's a couple again, little things that are sprouting up. You can tell the landscape's a little wild here and there. So there's a couple of things that are just popping up because it, they fell from the sky and dropped and started growing there. Um, but this tree right here is the one that's being taken out. So the answer is one tree that's, that's here, that's been here for a little while. That uh, is on the survey.
All right. And the bamboo is staying, right?
Uh, some of that's going to get taken out. Some of it might get replanted. Yeah. But that was also something I think even Bruce might have brought in himself there.
I just, uh, hi Commissioner Shelburne here. I just want to um, uh, follow up on this uh, tree conversation. So. Um, and Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the standards say. If, if you remove a tree, you have to replace it, but if you. Uh, the tree that you're removing, I think it only counts if it's eight inches in diameter at. Breast height. So any tree that's, it, it's eight inches in diameter at breast height. If you remove it, then you, this, the, the standards call for you to plant a new tree somewhere else, somewhere else on the property.
Perfect. Okay. Now that sounds good. We're going to be planting a few more, I think, than that. So that sounds good. We can, our final landscape plan will definitely have. All of that information in there that we can happily share with folks.
Yeah, just um, um, what we can make it one of the provisos, you know, at the end that. That, you know, a, a total number of, you know, the staff looks at. How many trees are coming out and, and, and how many trees are coming in and, and making sure that that aligns with the standards and criteria.
Great. That sounds good.
All right. And so uh, thank you very much for that, um, you know, explanation. So the other part for me, uh, is the square footage of the addition. I, I don't know. It looks like it's actually larger than the original house, actually. So what's the comparison between the square footage of the addition and the original house?
Yes, essentially we're, the square footage, uh, I, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head. We're, we're more or less doubling the size of the square footage of the existing house. Uh, the existing house is, is here. It's not a big home. Uh, again, this is the first floor. So if you just take this and, and, you know, times two, that's what's up on the second floor essentially. So uh, the addition is essentially adding that same square footage to be kind of doubling the square foot in terms of its size.
Yeah. You don't recall any numbers, do you? I mean, like you're not the tech. That's what you deal with, right?
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking more about the outside, I guess, than I can remember the inside. Um, it's going something like fourteen hundred to maybe twenty six hundred, twenty six fifty, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That was, that was good. Um. And the other question, just for clarification, are you saying that the addition is not taller than the original house?
Correct.
And it doesn't go further back than the original house?
It does go further back than the original house. Yes. Yeah. So the addition, uh, if I can, you can see my cursor here. This is the back of the existing house here. Uh, on this part, maybe I can make, write it with my pen. This is the back. If I use, let's pick a yellow. I'll make it bigger.
In, in the future, it'd be great to actually shade the area of new versus existing. Okay. It will, it will pop a little bit better than.
Understood.
Just shading the walls.
Okay.
All right. So what are we looking at now in yellow?
And yellow is the existing house.
And all the red is.
The red is new. Correct.
Got it. Got it.
So we're adding a little bit onto the back and then we're adding that onto the kind of rear side there of the, of the house. Correct.
Mostly to the side and to the rear.
Right, right. And this is Center Street. Is it Center Street's kind of off over here to the right, right? Just through those two yellow lines. Right?
Yeah. That's, it's beautiful. I, 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 I love it.
Thank you. And I think this is kind of to address your um, intergenerational question, it's yeah, just. So you know, it's a single family home. The idea of, of intergenerational living means that it has, there's an opportunity for people of any. Mobility and age to be able to live in a single home. Uh, and have access to the same things on the first floor that you may need on the second or third floor if you can't get up there. Uh, and so that typically means that you have uh, doorways that are wide enough for a wheelchair to get through. Uh, for somewhere to sleep, use the bathroom and have a kitchen. It generally means that you have access to the front door or at least one door from the outside without having to go up and down any steps. Uh, to get into the house itself. And it also means that folks who uh, are able to go up and downstairs, you know, that you can essentially have someone who's not able to do that on the first floor. Again, they can live, sleep and eat on the first floor and then also have, you know, capabilities on the second floor. And so although we're not really generally talking about plans here, I just wanted to kind of say that the idea here is that, uh, you know, uh, Bruce and Jonathan would like to live on the second floor for as long as they can. At some point they're expecting that if they have to go up and down with a lift, we've essentially, uh, there's a. Uh, you know, an area here in the center that currently is a, there'll be a skylight up on this, on the second floor in the roof. It will let, you know, light shine down from the, from the roof down all the way to the first floor. So it's kind of like a light shaft. But that wall has been designed to be able to have a lift uh, put onto it so that if you can put a lift on there. Essentially get from the first floor up to the second floor within that shaft area. And then at some point, if that, you know, he has to stay on the first floor, he said it, he said, when I'm in, you know, on my bed and plugged into the wall. Uh, where this current living room is being designed to be also a, a bedroom that has then an en suite bathroom that's got access. That's got the clearances it needs to be able to get in and out of that restroom. And so he will then be sleeping on that first floor, which is currently the living room. Uh, and then in the future and someday, you know, down the road, Bruce is not there. Uh, he, you know, he's essentially said, I can set this up so that someone else can use it in the same way. Uh, someone can have this library in the front be a potential bedroom uh, there with an en suite bathroom here. And they can talk about it. So anyway, I guess the point is that the elevations on the outside are, are kind of reflecting on. How the program on the inside to be able to move people in and out of the building and up and down within the building. The outside has kind of been built off of that. And so I guess my point is that even though we're not talking about plans here, the outside, it's kind of, we, we started from the inside and we worked our way out. Uh, and so how the building is being used over multiple years by someone who has different mobilities. Has been designed uh, in that way while also reflecting the original uh, house being on Center Street and the facade on, on Center Street. So those two things has.
Michael, that was great. Michael, that was great. I feel like uh, I've really had an educational seminar in our intergenerational housing. And I had no idea, but I'm really glad that I asked and I seemed like I asked the right person. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Th- th- thanks guys. I just, uh, I'm sorry to be a stickler here, but we're, we're, we have to kind of steer away from use um, in our conversation. Uh, I, I too am fascinated with what, you know, his explanation clearly tremendous amount of thought has been thought. Uh, you know, put into the in, interior of this building. But uh, our jurisdiction is going to be outside. Yeah, it's, it's not us and. Um, it's fascinating, but we, we can't really spend time talking about it. So I, sorry.
I appreciate it. Yeah. It's a generation of housing. Yeah. It's a new concept uh, for me. So I just, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
All right.
And I, I, yeah, I, I just, the side did play a role, the inside did play a role in the shapes we ended up coming up with. So I guess, although, yeah, we're not talking about plans. I think it did play some shaping of that. So um, so that's one reason I also put that in here, just to kind of share that with you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt, I, you, you must have a lot to say here. Uh, we'd love, we, we love to hear your thoughts. Please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I do. Um, I'm, this is a, you know, a new project for me. I, I wasn't around when um, you, you came to this commission uh, last year, I guess. Um, last, about a year ago. Um, I, I, I want to just start by saying, yes, the presentation was excellent. Michael, great job. Um, the, uh, the, I, I think the landscape design looks very lush, very thoughtful. Um, looks, looks great. I didn't realize that piece of property was, went back so far. That's amazing. I've, I've actually photographed that house. I, it's, I'm, I'm a fan. Um, I think it's.
There's a little gem back there.
I think it's adorable. Um, I, I don't have any problem with the parts of the building that you're demolishing. I agree um, with staff that they're, um, they're, they're not integral to the, to the original building. And, and um, they can, they can be um, improved with an addition. Um, I do have some concerns. Um, so let me just start at the top. Um, the roof, the roof height. Um, yes, the roof is no higher than the peak of the gable. Um, it is, it is the height of the peak of the gable. But we do have to recognize that when you, from the street, what we're seeing is um, a point. A one that where the existing building kisses that imaginary line in one place at that point. And then we're seeing basically a long flattened. Um, extension of what is essentially a shed roof. So we're seeing the highest point of the addition, which match, which matches that peak. So uh, while it is truthful to say it's no higher than the existing building, I think it will be perceived as higher. Because. as higher, because we're seeing
Yep.
A three-story flat facade, that, um, so that's, that's one concern. Um, next is a question, what is the existing roof material on the, um, house?
Existing roof material is, uh, asphalt shingles on it, and we're replacing that with a metal roof.
Okay, all right, and I see you're doing the same metal roof on the addition, okay, that was just a, I was just curious about that, um, I, I think, um, you know, we're, we're looking at buildings for, um, we're not asking additions to to, to match the style of the existing building, that, that wouldn't be right, um, I think we're looking, we're looking for things to be, um, compatible with existing architecture, sympathetic, um, you know, a nice, uh, playing nicely with, with the existing architecture in a way that is harmonious, um, and not detrimental to the existing building. Um, and I, I think there are some things with the roofs of this addition which are causing me major, major problems, um, uh, both the fact that it's a shed, that there, that there's shed roofs, or the shed, and in the biggest part of the addition is, is facing the street with the tallest facade facing, um, but also, um, I have to say also the window size and proportion, and also the materials, um. I'm, I'm, uh, you have such great ins- uh, buil- like, you have this this existing building to kind of mine for inspiration with, you know, you got the horizontal clabberds, you got the, the coins are what's singing, the coins are the corner rusticated stone-looking blocks for, for anyone that doesn't know, that are, that are, if you look at the front facade of the existing building, they're, they're what march, um, up and down um, vertically, um, uh, and, uh, if I could, um, oops. Um, if I could share my screen for just a second. Um, no, it's fine, I just, uh, uh, this is, these are some of my photographs of the, of the house from a couple of years ago. Um, but it's just, they're, they're what make the house so unique, um, and I'm glad to hear you're planning to keep those, um, I will say that I have a house similar vintage, and I had it painted um, last summer, and to my surprise, the, the painters, they scraped everything down to bare wood, and they said that the existing clabberds were the, like, they said they don't make them like that anymore, they, they, they took the paint so, um, so beautifully, um, so uh, you, you might find that you don't need to replace it with hardy board, um, but, you know, that's, that's up to you, they, they I guess, we'll find out, um.
Yeah, right.
Um, but I, I'm gonna stop sharing now, um, so, uh, so if you could go back to your presentation, um, so, the other thing that, um, oops, sorry, I'm gonna stop sharing, how do I do that?
So the share was like, you're referencing the, the kind of that corner detail on the, on the
Yes, these are, yes.
With the wood sections, yeah.
Yeah, those, the, 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 um, the brick colored things, those are, those are the coins that are really unique, I mean, there are just so few properties that have those, so again, I'm happy that you're, that you're keeping them, um, so you know, if we, could you go back to share your screen, your elevations for a second, um, I just have some questions, um. Would you ever consider, um, and again, this is coming from a place of getting inspiration and not replication, um, but if you go to the front facade, um, for a second, yes. Would you ever consider, so, I, I think what we see in the existing building is a two, two and a half story building, um, that is, that sings as one thing. That the stories are united by the clabberds, and then you, and it, and it, and it, you know, they're, they're emphasized by the coins marching up and down the, the sides of the building, and you've chosen in the addition to basically kind of cut off your addition at the first floor, so you have horizontal, you know, clabberds going at the first story and vertical with a very different window shape going above that, which is very i- in contrast, um, and I am, I am a modern architect, I, I love modernity, um, so I have, I have no problem with doing a modern addition, I'm just, it's curious that you haven't used the existing buildings as an inspiration at all.
Everyone see, I'm sorry to interrupt, can everyone see Michael's screen on the call?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you, one hundred percent, Angela.
So, so let me keep going, so, uh, and, I'm, like, an idea, um, could be to you have these coins, coins were, um, they're, they're meant to look like rusticated stones, like, to give gravitas to a building, to make it look more substantial, um, you could, you could do something similar, and it wouldn't be real coins, but it might be just wider clabberds, and it might be, you know, you could do them in hardy board or whatever, that could be the base of the building, um, the first floor, um, and then you could keep the hor- I would say horizontal clabberds on the second floor, just to kind of make it work a little bit more closely with the existing building, um.
You're saying like, like, uh, like, you know, maybe make these like a six, and these are four horizontal or something like that?
Yeah, maybe, just play with the proportional, if you feel committed to kind of emphasizing treating the first floor different than the second floor, maybe there's just a way that's a little bit more sympathetic to the existing building, um, the other thing, um, is for, for, and I think color is not in our jurisdiction, um, but I will say that um, think about this, if you paint the addition, keep it that dark color that you were proposing, but you have the existing building be a little bit lighter, or maybe even a lot lighter, it's gonna pop more, and the addition is going to visually recede, um, and that's just a trick that you, you might find really helpful, um, and it, and it, and you could even, you know, they could play with the same colors, you know, the, the trim on the addition could be the lighter part, and the, and the bod- it could be the body of the existing building, right, so you could kind of, it's not like you have to have a whole other color scheme, you could just kind of maybe inverse it, um. And then, the last thing, oh, just a cur- curious thing about the, the roof slopes and the intersection, when I, when you started with the with a roof plan, I thought, oh, that must be a mistake, that the roof isn't intersecting the existing roof, and I'm not sure what I would hope it to do, but it, you might, you might get a, a, a snow a snow storage problem.
Yeah, we're, we're
And a, and a water problem.
We're working on that detail right now.
Okay, okay.
We're doing like, there's gonna be some cricketing happening there, there's gonna be some, uh, you know, low temperature coils that'll probably be in that spot there, so yeah, that's definitely something we're figuring out now.
And I just, and I just want to clarify, so for the existing building, are you replacing the windows, or are you
I, yeah.
Refurbishing them?
Uh, well, that's a good question, we, we haven't done the, a lot of testing on those yet, um, we think that they are not original windows. Uh, they're, they're
Even with the archtop, really?
Well, the, the trim stuff, well, maybe this one is, these might be original, I'm not sure, um, up here at the top, I think these are uh, you know, replacement windows, like
Yeah, those do, those, the second floor definitely does.
These might be replacement too, so, yeah, there's, so we're gonna check and see, ideally, you know, we want to make this thing, we don't want to have a really nicely insulated kind of code-compliant addition, and then have this thing be super leaky, so we're kind of working on trying to find the balance of tightening it up while not taking stuff out.
I just want to make sure that if you are planning to replace those archtop windows, that they stay arch.
Yes, they will, yeah, we're gonna be working kind of from the inside out, right?
Okay.
Right.
Okay, um, let me just check my notes. Um, I, I think that's, that's all I had, thank, thank you for listening.
And thank you for the, the suggestions.
I, I wanted to add something to, um, what has been said so far.
Go, go ahead, Dr. Cook.
Okay, I, I really like the contrast, and the way of the roofs, the back roof is a little more modern than the other roof, I think it adds character to the Roxbury theme of keeping the old as well as bringing in the new, so, and also just the way it, um, goes back and goes up, so I just really, um, like it a lot, the way it is.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I'll
add to that, this is Sule, um, yeah, Michael, I think it was a great presentation, I'm also an architect, uh, appreciate the, the, the design, um, I'm also fine with the, generally, I'm fine with, fine with demolition, given that it's, um, part you're demolishing, uh, wasn't add-on, I, um, I am okay with the new design, I think the contrast is fine, you've kept it like deliberate, and, um, while you maintain the, the existing, especially that front facade, definitely keep, keep those details, um, I I think the color could pop more, but, um, that's, I guess that's your taste, but, um, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the the difference, even with the height, um, because it is set back, I think you carefully set it back, I don't see it imposing on the street elevation. Um, especially when you, with the vegetation fully, um, grown out. And I, I did notice, like, at the seal of the new windows, it looks like you incorporated that, I don't know what you would call it, the little, um, uh, trim piece at the seal, but, I don't know.
You guys.
It looks like you're trying to pay homage to the original window.
Yeah, so some of the little things that we're trying to pull across, even though, you know, it is a mo- more modern, and like you said, kind of that vertical siding, but we were looking at some of those sills and the little corbels that are underneath it, and trying to kind of pull some of those elements across so that they have some relationship to the original without again copying it, so the corbels might be a slightly more modern version of that or something, you know, might again, there's gonna be some detailing need to be done, but, yeah, we were trying to pull those kind of across to have them in line, and also just trying to keep the general uh, you know, the, the, the sills of all the windows at the same height, um, this addition here, kind of to keep this line uh, you know, in alignment with the bottom of the eve of the original house and things like that, so there were some proportional things that we spent some time working through uh, on that side of it.
I noticed that, I think that, that does, yeah, that's true.
Um, so, Commissioner, uh, Baros Milner, you, you have your hand up, uh, I've been patiently waiting, please, please go ahead.
No, no problem, thank you, um, I just have one question, one comment, the, the question is, um, and I think, um, Commissioner, is it Sule, um, that just spoke, um?
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, just making sure I'm pronouncing it right, I think you alluded to this, but the, we're seeing this all as one plane, but the, it like, the, the addition won't be on the, as, in the same plane as the original house, right, it's sort of stepping back, yeah, and so I think, um, cause I agree with Commissioner Ward Hyatt, that like, it kind of competes with the roofline and, and that other rendering, but this really um, shows that it's, in my opinion, not gonna be taking away from, from the original, and the other piece, and, and I don't know if the rendering um, this is the com- so that, the question is just making sure, and you just answered it with the, with the photo, with the rendering, um, the, the comment is that if, I don't know if the rendering is, is accurate in terms of like the fencing and the landscaping, I know we talked a little bit about the trees, but I I think that what you're doing there with the fencing, and with cleaning up some of the vegetation in front of the original home, really lets you appreciate it more, you know, like, right now, it's sort of obscured with the existing, I think it's chain link, um, and existing vegetation, so just wanted to say, I, I love how it looks, I don't know if the fence is like, you know, um, finalized, but I, I think it really um, adds a lot of character and, and, um, lets you appreciate the original home a lot more.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, for that, fencing, we were kind of paying attention to, I'm sorry, having a, a basement office where you get, um, pipe sounds, but anyway, so I'm not, you guys, you're not, uh, but the uh, see if I have a photo here, I mean, you can, uh, maybe not this one, anyway, there's some original components to the driveway that, um, are there now that yeah, I mean, these things here, like, there's one here already that's there, and there's one by the driveway, it's kind of hidden behind this vegetation here, uh, and so yeah, these are kind of elements that we're trying to keep, and then, again, just more traditional wrought iron on the front, just a chain link, but, in any case, I don't think I have a photo here that shows that. Um, maybe it's actually a bit here.
Michael, are you, you're keeping the, the granite posts at the driveway and at the corner, and you're adding two more where there's a sidewalk?
So there's one here, on this corner, there's one on this driveway corner here, and then there's, um, I guess, these photos don't have it, but yeah, exactly, so there's, there's one here on this corner, there's one here, and then there's one on the opposite corner, on the other corner of the property there. And so we'd be adding two more to have the new entrance for the pedestrian walking in the middle, and then switch out this chain link for a more traditional looking wrought iron, or something like that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, um. Okay, Commissioner, uh, Ward Hyatt, you, you have raised your hand, go, go ahead, please.
Um, I just remembered one more thing, could you go back to that 3D view, cause you're, I think, uh, Selena is right, I, you know, that, from that perspective, um, the height of that furthest back addition is, is really not really um, not really, uh, as important as it looks in the, in the elevation, you were absolutely right. Wha- what I'm just wondering about here, that now be, looks very apparent to me, is, um, the eve line of the existing building, and it's dying into kind of, it, it's hitting the you know, the facade right above the window of the front part of the addition, is there any way that eve of that first edition could be brought down a little bit, just so it's not hitting in a weird place, um, oh, wait, in the elevation, it looks like
Yeah, so, the, uh, and I, I guess I pledged, some of these renderings are a little older than the actual
Oh, okay.
Work, so, we've, we've kind of reworked some of this so that there are eaves are, are meeting each other
Oh, good.
In this corner here, and then we'll have like, that kind of cricket detail that we're working on come up from that corner to make a little valley um, up to a higher point for like snow-low purposes and things like that, so we want essentially this, uh, these two, these two elements here to meet each other.
Would you just extend the shed to intersect the, the existing gable? Why, why wouldn't you just have it extend?
This one here?
Just that whole roof, when you kind of just extend the two geometries, and it would, um, so you wouldn't have to cricket.
You will, yeah.
If you extrude it, extrude it all the way.
I guess it'd be a little bit of a dead zone underneath, but yeah, that's, that's something we could frame out too, I think, yeah.
It just, and, and it end up, it might end up looking a little cleaner, so you just see that line.
This way, yeah, yeah, and that's, yeah, I understand. Yeah. And it's gonna be all metal too, so we should, it'll be a cleaner, you know, component there, so, yeah, definitely, that's a good, good
It's probably gonna be less expensive than a, than a cricket, than figuring out a expensive cricket, yeah.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely, and then, yeah, we're gonna do some framing details, I, I appreciate that, yeah.
Mi- Michael, can you, can you go to the view where you're kind of standing at the driveway, looking at the building from my forty-five?
Um, this one here?
Oh, that, yeah, that one there, you know, you you have this, you know, new addition, but you, it, it does seem like you're, you're having some language, um, some historic language there above the windows, and I'm, I'm wondering if, if the new addition just reads, you know, contemporary altogether, you know, um, and it doesn't have those, I think you have like some, uh, trim above the window that has the little dentals in it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that true?
Yeah, I, again, I'll, I'll, uh, again, this is like that same rendering that's a little older that we've actually brought down a little bit and kind of adjusted this, so I would say that general massing of this is, is right, uh, the elevation is really the one that's the most updated version on here, and that would be, so you're talking about these down here?
Yeah, I would just, I would just, you know, my recommendation is to have the new addition just read as all contemporary language, I mean, I get it, you know, making sure the symmetry of the windows kind of, you know, has those horizontal lines, you know, and considering that, but I'm not, I'm, I'm a little nervous about bringing, you know, having, you know, modern kind of fake details, you know, created to replicate the old, you know? I don't know what, if other commissioners have thoughts on that.
I agree with you, pick, pick, pick what you want to do and do it, um, I, I, I still think that if it's done in a modern way, you can still kind of pick up cues, um, that you might be missing right now, but I agree, like, just tacking on the, the dental um, hoods to those windows that you see on the existing building is probably not, not doing anyone any, just any service there.
Um, and other commissioners have thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think it just depends how you do it, um, I don't know exactly, that's why I was kind of asking what, what, the intention is, and what you're like, how are you gonna pull it off? like, how are you gonna pull it off? Like, cause if you just put something wood, yeah, that could be probably not, uh, so tasteful, but, um, if you find something modern that works, um, yeah, I think it could be, but yeah, just put some thought to that. Definitely get some proportions, right?
Yeah, I would just, I would, I would move away from replicating that old details onto the new structure. Um, just make it all look with the same language, contemporary.
These would definitely be a little harder, because these don't have, th- these are much more detailed in terms of their style and stuff like that, uh, than say this bottom section, which is a little bit more of a simple, you know, thing to kind of carry over.
Yeah, you, you would have to have those custom made to, to, um, and it would be a great expense for the proponent. Um, so I would just, I would do away with that.
Yeah.
Uh, and it, and it makes the building read more clearly, right? Uh, we know what the old is. We know what the new is. Um, it's all very clear. Um, if there are, if commissioners don't have any further comments, I think we should open it up for public comment. All right. Oh, um, is that okay, Joe? Are we at that point?
That's fine. I'm just going to get the script up.
Yeah, stop my share here. Or you can steal it, I guess.
All right, Andrew, can you see my screen in the?
Yep. Yes, sir. Uh, public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at HighlandACDC@Boston.gov.
All right, Allison Pulteness, would you like to make your comment?
Yes, hi, um, Allison Pulteness. I, I live in Mission Hill, but know the house from, uh, riding the bus on Center Street all the time. Um, and, uh, just to say, I, I'm not reporting on this meeting. My, uh, name on my screen said Penway News, but that's not why I'm on the meeting. Um, and my question is more general and going back to the early conversation about trees. Um, I think it would be really, really helpful if, um, uh, the application or the commissioners, uh, know more about what species we're talking about. Um, if they're identified on the application, that's helpful, but also whether they're deciduous or evergreen or native or non-native. So those are all factors to think about with the landscaping, um, especially, uh, obviously with what trees you're taking out. So.
Good point.
Thank, that's all my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, I will, um, report. I did receive written comment from Kate Phelps, and I'll read that. Um, she writes, "I'm unable to stay for the whole of tonight's Highland Park ACDC hearing, but would like my concerns added to the permanent record. One, the design for this new construction strikes me as overwhelming, attaching an addition at least as large as the original building and out of keeping with the massing of other similar homes in the immediate area. Two, it seems odd and out of character with the street to have the front door facing the side. Three, although the sketches make it appear that much of the existing canopy will remain in the front-facing section of the building, I am skeptical that it's probable the plan itself refers to saving as many trees as possible. Not a commitment at all. And four, finally, I continue to believe that the new structure has every feature of a two-family home in spite of the homeowner's claim concerning intention to use the extra accommodation for housing living healthcare workers in the future. Homeowner claims are easily made, but with four bathrooms and several living rooms and two enormous back decks, I believe this project should go before the Inspection Services Department as a change of purpose and be measured against the standards required of such material transition. Thank you for considering this input. And, um, you know, I, I will just say a lot of the, you know, the use, as we have said, is outside of the mission.
Um, I, uh, Joe, I believe the, the homeowner has his hand up there, uh, and would like to make a comment.
Yes, yep. Bruce, if you give us your full name?
Uh, my full name is as displayed, Bruce McClay. And I just wanted to make a comment about the, the, um, the trees. All of the trees on the property except for the evergreen spruce that's right at the sidewalk are invasives. They're either Norway maples or they're locusts. Um, and I will keep as many trees as, as, as possible as the contractors will allow me to keep and still be able to construct the building. Um, what makes this property so wonderful is the fact that it has the canopy, uh, front, side, and back. And we'll keep all, all, all the trees, but any tree that comes out will be an invasive.
Hey, thank you. I think, um, Andrew, I think that's all of public comment.
Okay, um, um, can we, uh, entertain a motion for a continuance? Um, how do, how do commissioners feel about that? A con- a continuance to, to incorporate the changes that were discussed in tonight's meeting and, and, and have one final, uh, presentation at next month's hearing?
I don't, I don't think we need a continuance.
Okay. Other commissioners?
Yeah, what, what would be the changes, uh, that we would, that you would propose?
Um, well, um, Commissioner Ward Hyatt talked about, you know, adapting the, the old coins and, and having inspiration on the new building with the coins and, um, there were a bunch of different changes actually we discussed.
Yeah, it's more about looking at the siding. I'm, I'm not convinced that this kind of two-story expression is the right thing to do, but, um, I, I, I'm curious if, um, the architect or homeowner is interested in exploring that.
Are, are, uh, Michael Chavez, are, are you, um, um, interested in exploring another, um, another massing, I guess, if, as, as?
It's, it's not really massing and
Okay.
and, and it would also be good to see the updated 3D views that show your current thinking, because those hadn't been updated. So I, I guess I'll, I'll just keep going. I, I'm not su- sure. I feel like it's quite ready to, to hand off to staff review. I, I think it would be good as commissioners to, to see this one more time and, and maybe it will be a really quick thing, because we will have all been kind of familiar with the design, but I was, I was just coming into this not having ever seen it before. It would have actually probably been helpful to see what you had previously, but, um, regardless, uh, I, I feel, I feel like I would like to see it one more time.
Well, yeah, so I would feel uncomfortable now if we did not revisit this, because I feel like, you know, what, um, Angela, uh, Ward is suggesting, uh, and Michael is, you know, it seemed like been in agreement, and I don't know if they're gonna look at the same thing the same way, but it'd be good to have one more look at it, um, to make sure, because I know, I'm sure that Michael wants to be on the same page as the rest of us. You know, and, and I know Bruce, you know, would love to have Michael on the same page, because that's so. Yeah, so Andrew, I think we should have another go-round at this.
Yes, I, I think, uh, just as a quick response, I'm, I'm, I think coming back in the next month would be fine. You know, one of the starts, the stages we were at recently was, you know, we hadn't gone to the, you know, level of super design detail yet, because we just weren't, you know, we had gone through a kind of a, a little bit of, of a gamut of things with, you know, not having to have gone through zone, even though we did and a bunch of things like that. So usually when you're going through that process where you have enough information to be able to then get the feedback you want, then take it to that next level. And that's kind of really where we were at. So long story short, I think we can still make progress, progress on our drawings with the level of details that we were hoping to do anyway, knowing that overall, I think, folks, it sounded like to me, there was a general agreeance on the massing, the size, that what we were doing with, with the exterior, et cetera. And there may be some options we may want to explore when it comes to a horizontal siding versus a vertical siding. Move some of those trim details over the windows, things like that. So we can still make that progress. And maybe what we can do in a month when we come back is have some more detailed information about some of that, along with maybe there's a horizontal option or something, you know, with the vertical next to it, and we can kind of just take a look at that. Um, I don't think we necessarily have a, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna speak for you, Bruce, but you know, I don't think we necessarily have a hard line on our, you know, thoughts on that particular, uh, you know, comment or anything. So I think we can explore it, see how it feels and looks and, you know, and then we can present that back. So but I think overall, you know, and then we can also have more information about the landscaping too, which is something that's been on my to-do list for a while. So we can also bring that back with some more information about what's actually going to be there. You know, again, that big tree in the front is, uh, Yep. an evergreen versus the rest of them are all deciduous, but that evergreen really is the one that's on Center Street that really kind of blocks some of that viewing to the back and stuff. So anyway, we can just provide another layer of information, essentially another layer of detail while at the same time res- you know, responding to some of the comments that were made tonight, um, we'd be fine with that.
Nice, sounds like a yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, uh, Baros Milner, uh, you have your hand up, please.
Yeah, I can, I can probably clarify this with staff to not take more time. I'm, I'm just a little, um, I think what, um, what Michael, what you just shared makes sense. I think what, what I'm not clear about our purview is that it seems like most of the concerns are with the addition, like people aren't concerned that we're affecting the character of the original structure. And I heard myself, and I don't know, Michael, you're, you and Angela and others are, are the architects here, so I could be wrong. I heard a bit of mixed feedback, whether to like try to incorporate or, or be sympathetic to historical elements versus like being completely different and being clear, like this is new, this is old. So I'm, I'm just worried, I don't want to send the proponents a bit mixed, mixed, uh, directives or, or suggestions. So I don't know if we want to clarify here or staff, or at some point just clarify like the particulars of the design that, that we want to be brought back next month. And, and I don't know if we can make a commitment for it to be next month, because they've been put through the wringer a bit already through, not by us, but through just the various processes at the city. So, yeah, I, I think some of it is sort of like taste and preferences, and some of it is more relevant to like the historical nature of the original. So I, I just not sure what our purview is with that, but I want to make sure that we're giving very clear guidance and, and speaking in, in a single voice where possible.
That's a, that's a very good point. Um, we could, we could make up a, a motion for continuance, and then we could add, add provisos to the continuance. Um, and, and very clear provisos. I think Michael has a good list, but let's make sure that we're not giving him mixed messages here. Um, so, uh, let's first make a motion for continuance, and then let's, let's, um, come up with the provisos. Um, how about that? Um, so I would like to make a motion that we continue this proposal and, um, with, uh, the following provisos that we will, we will provide right now. Um, and Angela Ward Hyatt, do you want to go forward with those provisos?
Um, well, um.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot here. I, I don't.
So, but if, um, if we're asking them to come back, I don't think we need to give provisos. Be, I think that would be, wouldn't that, maybe I'm looking for, um, Joe should.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. I mean, I, I think what I've heard is, um, you know, possibly a motion to continue with a direction for the applicant, applicant to come back with further revisions to the roof details where the addition will meet the existing house. Additional window, window details specifically that trim elements are not replicated at the new addition. A, a new look at siding details of the existing or of the new addition to break up the massing and relate to the existing house, and then a more developed landscape plan. Um, I think specifically with more information about what trees will be removed and how they will be replaced.
You got it.
That's it. That's it. That's it. Okay, let's.
Yeah, that's my list too. I guess my main question, my main question would be this, if this is the case, right? Do, am I having to resubmit on the same deadline?
No.
Come back with the presentation that, uh, on that night and this kind of?
Well, I think, or that, I think, um, you know, just looking at our calendar, so the, the next hearing do, 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 will be, uh, the, the twenty-sixth. So, um, June twenty-sixth. So if we could meet, you know, at a staff level, maybe on the sixteenth or seventeenth, you know, hopefully you could have pretty developed plans of what we discussed now by that week. And I always like to have as close to final plans on that Friday before, because that way commissioners will have a chance over the weekend to take a look.
Yeah.
At, at the, at the plans and study them.
Okay, understood. So the week of the sixteenth?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
You and I can meet then, and then, you know, ideally with, um, you, you know, the, the final plans of what you want to present on Friday, the twentieth, by the, by noon that day. So I share them and post them online.
And let's do, that's doable, yeah.
Okay, a motion, a motion for a continuance, um, given the conditions that, uh, uh, Joseph Cornish has, has read out loud to everyone here.
I'll second that motion.
But we need a first. Sule, do you want?
Oh, I'll make the, okay, I'll make a motion, uh, for continuance based on, uh, the provisions that were just outlined.
Uh, and I'll second it.
All right. And I will say, Sule, you can, and you're, you're, it's proper for you to make a motion, but um, since Commissioner Barrios Milner is here, you won't be able to vote. So, um,
Oh.
Because you're an alternate. So, um, Commissioner Hyatt?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
No, I'm not in favor of a continuance.
No, okay. Uh, Commissioner Kostin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shelburne?
Um, I'm an alternate too. Do, do we?
No, you, you, no, you, you can vote, because, um, you're going to be voting for Fadi, since Fadi's not here.
Okay, okay.
And you logged on first. You logged on before.
Okay, okay. Uh, then, then, uh, yes, uh, I'm i- in favor of the continuance.
Okay, perfect. So Michael, we'll, we'll meet, um, you know, feel free to reach out to me anytime between now and the week of the sixteenth, otherwise we'll plan to meet on the sixteenth and we'll, we'll hopefully you'll be still on schedule for shovels in the ground this summer.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll see how ISD goes, but yes, exactly. So we, we'll get to, so you want the updated presentation that we'd be like this, given to you by noon, the, on the twentieth, is that correct?
Friday, the twentieth.
Okay, I'll send it to you by, no, later than that. Okay.
Yeah, but we'll meet, let's meet, you know, that week and, or, or anytime soon where you're that you'd like.
I see. Okay, got it. No, that sounds good.
Really good question.
All right.
All right, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, staff updates. Thank you, Michael. Good, good luck to you, everybody.
All right, I, I, I will just report that, um, you know, we're still going through, we've had an incredible um, amount of applications for the preservation planner position. So we're still going through telephone screenings and then scheduling interviews for that. Um, I will say, I think, um, I am probably planning to remain the staff person for the Highland Park.
What am I getting? Exactly.
Commission, so I hope that's good news for people.
That's the life stability, right?
I won't be passing your law to, um, to a new staff person.
I didn't keep it in the shopping bag.
Oh, I will say.
I'm sorry, uh, okay.
Yeah, uh, we are also, um, I have just started to schedule interviews for the, um, the new commissioners, um, the nominations that came from the Highland Park neighborhood coalition to, um, to serve on the commission. So hopefully we'll be scheduling um, interviews over the next two weeks, so we can send recommendations off to the mayor's office. Um, I know Andrew, you had asked about the, the signage for the district. I checked in with, uh, Gabriella about the status and, um, she was working with, um, someone from the streets department. And the hope was, um, apparently the existing signage from the South End District was removed. So I think the first step was to reinstall those missing signs. And then hopefully we could have a discussion about having some, uh, district signage installed in Highland Park, so people could get an idea who maybe don't know or realize that Highland Park is a district, that it is, uh, an AC. An idea who maybe don't know or realize that Highland Park is a district that it is uh an ACDC.
And I. Yeah, it'd be good to get a sense of, you know, the timeline. We've kind of been. Talking about it on and off for, you know, two years or so, um, so I I last time. I talked to Gabriella more about, I'm more a about it, she said that they were sort of unresponsive. So, um, you know, I'm sure they're very busy people and and we're a lo- lower priority. Um, but uh anyways, it would just be good to keep it on the agenda until it, until, until it's solved. Um, and if there's anything we can do to. Um, apply some pressure or something, that would be good to know, um. Um, you know, the mayor's having his, the coffee hour coming up, so it'd be good to mention it maybe if that's, if that's useful. Um, the only other question I had for staff updates was, you know, kind of getting a sense of the bylaws. Uh, you know, I wanna move those forward as well. I know that the law department is kind of has those. Um, indefinitely, it seems.
I think what I'll do, um, you know, so I. Andrew, I think you were the only commissioner that sent out comments, so I think what I'll do is, um, between now and the next hearing, at least send out. Um, to every, all the commissioners, um, the bylaws, the draft bylaws with your comments and then, you know. Hopefully, if if people have some more comments, they can forward those to me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm sure they're gonna be changed in some some regards, so it's probably gonna have to go back to the law department anyways. Um, but the the law department, you know, uh, takes many months to respond, so.
Yeah, they're busy.
It's, yeah, they're very, I mean, they have more pressing things probably uh to do, but uh, it's good to stay on them, you know?
And those are my comments. Those are my updates.
Now, that's, thank you, that's, that's it. Um, motion, it, does anyone else have anything? Okay, motion, motion to adjourn?
That's it. It's a first day. And Robert's rules of water, that's the only one, you don't have to have a boat or anything else.
We need a second, we still need a second, we got.
You have to have a second for that?
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you.
Have a great holiday weekend, it's gonna be wet.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Still a little time in the garden, bye-bye. God bless.